So good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Board of the Town of Austin Town Hall Meeting for Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. So that's 12, 21, 21. I like, I like those fun numbers. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Phyllis Krieger. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So one of our fellow Town of Austin volunteers and past Town Councilman David Krieger lost his wife Phyllis Krieger a few weeks ago.
He did?
He did.
David, David, David and I ran together.
I know that. Yeah.
I didn't know he lost his wife.
We just learned about that. Yeah, sorry that we didn't share that. And he's been a dedicated volunteer even past his town council service with our zoning board and environmental advisory board. And we wanted to just take a moment before we get into tonight's festivities to remember Phyllis and share our deepest sympathies with David. May her memory be a blessing. Earlier today, I was able to participate in the honorary street naming of Main Street in the Village of Austin, which is now also known as Dream Shepherd's Way in memory of Dream Ione Shepherd. She was a remarkable young woman that we lost way too soon this past summer. Dream was an advocate for young people who struggled with medical challenges like herself, bringing her advocacy as far as the New York State Capitol and Good Morning America, too, truly making a difference in her way-too-short life of 16 years. We had the pleasure of remembering Dream for all her kindness and her unconditional love. I have known her since she was a little girl, and I was always amazed at her incredibly bright spirit and remarkable determination. That spirit will now be remembered in the Village of Austin as we think about how we can all follow Dream Shepherd's Way. Thank you to Dream posthumously for all you contributed to our community. We know you're listening, and also right alongside your mother Diana Lemon. Thank you to the Austin Village Board for acknowledging Dream with this very special honor. Today was also Make Music Day as we celebrate the winter solstice, and a big shout out to Mike and Mary Risco with Mike Risco Music for once again putting together a great lineup on these special days to ring in the holiday season. As we are now well into the holiday season, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge all of the many organizations here in Austin that collected donations, gifts, clothing, food, and more to spread hope and love during the holidays, especially the Baker Collier Christmas Cheer Fund, Austin Boat and Canoe Club, O'Prime, the Galata House, Open Door Family Medical Center, Neighbors Link, and I know many, 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 many more. We're lucky to live in a community that lifts each other up and helps out during times of need. If you can, please take the time to support these organizations year-round, as the need in our community does not go away when we flip the calendar to January. This is especially important as we see COVID cases ticking up. It's no secret that Omicron is here and is spreading. Yesterday afternoon, we participated in our bi-weekly call with Westchester County Executive George Latimer and his staff, as well as other municipal leaders, and the message from the county executive was that we are seeing a seasonal uptick in cases that is similar to what we experienced this time last year. On the bright side, we are seeing much lower hospitalization rates than we did last year. This is a testament to vaccines. We have very high rates of vaccines here in Westchester County, and although there are breakthrough cases, the vaccines are helping these cases to be milder than previous waves, and that is good news. I know we are all experiencing a little, okay, a lot of pandemic fatigue, but it is important to continue all of the protocols that we have relied upon for the past nearly two years. Test, isolate, vaccinate, repeat. Please get vaccinated, get your children vaccinated, get the booster when you're eligible, and exercise caution. Please also consider smaller holiday gatherings this year and prioritize gatherings with only those who are fully vaccinated and boosted, or gatherings that are outdoors. And unfortunately, because of climate change, the weather is actually cooperating with us a little bit. I'm hopeful we will get through this winter spike and have many better days ahead in 2022. Do my board colleagues have anything to add for announcements?
Okay. I wanted to thank everybody who participated in the toy drive. It was truly a community-wide effort with the ambulance corps, the fire department, the senator's office, Elijah Milnick had a box, Chatter McYacht Club. I mean, just the Risco, there's so many places and organizations that helped us to be able to help the kids. We did meet the goal. Even Galata House reached out and wanted to make sure that we got to where we got, you know, we got to fill the need. And now we made it. So the kids will have a good Christmas, and I wanted to thank everybody who helped. Also, and I thank you to Ovek, who always goes above and beyond. I lost my voice the other day while shilling for toys. And they were able to make sure that I was not contagious, as I went to every organization in town to collect toys, and also worked with my patients and children. So a huge shout out to them for the amazing job they're doing each and every day to protect our community. We're so lucky to have them. Other communities really just don't have the asset that we do, and it's amazing. So thank you.
Anybody else have anything they wanted to add to announcements? Okay, well, next up, we have a little presentation to honor our outgoing and longtime council member, Northern Welter, Jr. Junior. Are you there? So today, we had the opportunity to tour around and bring a little cheer to all of the departments in the town. And we took, we also took the opportunity to honor Councilman Welter with a little bit of a, we call it a trophy. It's on a plaque. It's a, it's a crystal.
It's a little trophy.
Trophy.
Yeah.
For his 18 years of service to the town on the board. And he has been a faithful and committed board member. And I think the only time that he really had to miss meetings were if, you know, any kind of health issues, or every once in a while, a conflict would come up. But the priority was always Tuesday nights. And I know that he said he's not quite sure what he's going to do with his Tuesday nights from here on in. But we know that he's gonna, we're already working on finding some good additional volunteer opportunities for him. And after we gave him this plaque, Council, Councilmember Jackie Shaw was also with me. And I mean, we gave him the trophy. We also gave him a proclamation. We were hoping to have a little bit of a celebration last night in person, but because of the uptick in COVID cases, we really decided to postpone that celebration. So yesterday was Northern's birthday. So happy birthday to you, sir. And it was also da-da-da-da-da, Councilman Northern Welter Jr. Day in the Town of Austin, which is, I just kind of jumped to the end of the proclamation, but I am going to read the proclamation, because I think you all want to know a little bit more about Northern, what he's been up to since 2004. He's been a steady presence in the Town of Austin, joining the town council in 2004. And whereas Northern and his wife Jessie moved to Austin in 1957, and even though they planned to move back to Tarrytown, where Northern had lived when they met a few years before, Austin got lucky, and the Wilters chose to raise their family here, including their four children, 10 grandchildren, and six great-grandchildren, many of whom still live right here in Austin. And whereas the Wilters have been dedicated volunteers at Star of Bethlehem Baptist Church, and Northern's leadership in various organizations has been notable, serving two years as president of the Star of Bethlehem Church Trustee Board, past Master of Corinthian Lodge Number 44, 32nd Degree Master Mason in the Prince Hall Order of Eastern Star, 25 years as worthy patron of Roots Chapter Number Eight, past member of NAACP Austin Chapter, as well as an honorary recognized by the Austin High School Cooperative Scholarship Fund. And whereas jury's tenure on the Town Board, including several terms as deputy town supervisor, Councilman Welter has been an excellent mentor and level-headed sounding board to many supervisors and Town Board colleagues with his wealth of institutional knowledge and experience navigating complex issues. And it would not be a Town Board meeting without Councilman Welter completing the essential task of converting the courtroom to Town of Austin space by hanging the official banner. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dana A. Levinberg, Supervisor of the Town of Austin, with the tremendous support of the Austin Town Board, thank Honorable Northern Welter Jr. For his many years of service to the Austin community as councilman, and wish him all the best in his much-deserved retirement, but not for too long. Be it further resolved that December 20th, 2021, I know I skipped ahead to this already, be named Councilman Northern Welter Jr. Day in the Town of Austin in recognition of Councilman Welter's dedicated service to the Town of Austin as councilman. So very excited about that. And
And I thank you.
Go ahead. Did you want to say a couple of words?
Yeah, I just say thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'm, some of the things you read, I'm wondering where it comes from.
Well, we found them out from someplace.
I noticed that you did. Some of it I forgot I done.
And one of the interesting things that happened when we were touring around to all of the different departments is everybody knows Councilman Welter. Even people that didn't even come from Austin. And we have somebody who works in our court who's from White Plains, and he just walked right up to him. And he knew, he knew, I think Northern was a little surprised. He didn't quite, he wasn't expecting that. But everybody knows Councilman Welter and has such great respect for you, and really such warm place in all of our hearts for all the hard work that you've done on behalf of our community. So we are ever so grateful, and we are truly, truly going to miss you. And I don't exactly, I think we have to give up on the banner, right? Because nobody knows how to put that thing up. We do have, we do have some plans for that, because our banner is faded. So we'll keep you posted about that. We have, we have some plans.
Yeah. Once, once we get back in the meeting, you'll need it, yes.
Exactly, exactly. We have, yeah, we just, when we thought we're going to be back in person anytime soon, we're questioning if that's going to be the case. We also have a special recognition.
Final presentation there.
Here's our final presentation. And we're, of course, we're very grateful for, for Council, Councilwoman Shaw, for her term on the board, and for just stepping up when we needed her, and then running for, for office after having been appointed and winning. And I think, you know, a lot of people aren't quite sure what they're in for when that happens, but she really just stepped in. And then she's now the executive director of IFCA, and it's very challenging, as we know, to run an organization as the lead and also manage some of the duties. But she has agreed to take on the responsibility of CDAG, which is to help us out with our CDBG grants. And we've determined that it is not to be a conflict of interest. So we're happy that she's gonna, we're gonna keep her in the loop that way, starting in 2022. We're also very grateful for another special person, and that would be one Jessie Welter. And Jessie is Northern's wife, and she quickly became the official Zoom expert of the Welter household during the COVID pandemic, never missing a virtual Town Board meeting with a quick pre-meeting hello, and always supporting her husband, Councilman Northern Welter Jr. During his 18 years as Town Councilman. So we wanted to give a very special shout out to Jessie for making sure that your husband was with us and able to participate in all of the many board meetings. And even I think he decided he might have preferred it to being in person.
You're right, I would, but I'm grateful for where I am. And I, I'm grateful for my secretary.
She's your tech, she's your, she's your technology whiz, I think.
Okay.
Technology Director of the Welter household. So we, we very much appreciate it. And we heard earlier from Jessie, Jessie, I don't know if you wanted to say again, that you got the opportunity to learn a lot from having to do this every week.
Yes, I did. And knowing my wildest dreams, that I ever realized that Councilman Welter would have been in this position. So I've learned right along with him. And I do thank everyone for taking such good care of him. We sort of spoiled him and made it really bad for him when he came home. But thank you so much for this certificate of appreciation. And I wish a healthy, happy, prosperous 2022 for all of you and your families.
Thank you so much. Are you running for Town Council next?
Oh, you talking about Jessie?
Yeah, Jessie, I was talking about Jessie.
She said you're running for Town Council.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. And so next up, and thank you to Northern and Jackie for your service to the Town of Austin. Enjoy your Tuesday evenings. And thank you to Victoria Caffrelli for putting together our little presentation this evening. Next up, we are, let me, let me actually, before, let me just take a minute break or so, maybe a couple more than a minute, to see if any of my Town Board colleagues wanted to say a few words to Northern, to Jackie, to Jessie, or council members.
Sure. I would just say thank you to both, all of you. You guys have been great to work with. And certainly, as somebody who's new on the board, I was very fortunate and lucky to have you guys to learn from. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I want to say, Northern, I miss sitting next to you. I've missed sitting next to you for the last year and a half now. But your vast institutional knowledge and your Southern gentlemanly ways were appreciated and are still appreciated. And I thank you for all of your guidance and wisdom over these years. And Jackie, it's been an honor to serve with you. You really brought some great perspectives, having the younger kids in the group, not counting you, Greg, but you know, and being on the rec board, really understanding and being on, you know, giving so much time to the rec board for all those years, even before serving on the Town Board, and being able to bring a town perspective as well as a Briercliff perspective growing up. I mean, you really brought so much depth and depth and so many things to the board. I will definitely miss you, and it was been an honor to serve with you. Thank you both.
Oh, my gosh, guys. Thank you so much. I can't tell you how much I've learned in the last four years being on the board from all of you. And it's been an honor and a privilege to work with all of you and to meet and work with the town staff. I mean, Dana, you have a phenomenal staff. And it's just, it's been great. And as Dana said, I'm not going far. I'll still be involved. You'll still see me, just not every Tuesday. Thank you all so much.
Absolutely. And thank you for your consummate professionalism always, and your preparedness and everything that you've done and brought, and your perspective. It is, it has, it has been so appreciated, your work on the comp plan, your work on, you know, again, as Councilman, Councilmember Feldman mentioned, your work, your past work on the RED, and what you brought that expertise to the Town Board was supremely helpful. And we will always appreciate your years on the board. So thank you. And again, you're not going too far, and we're not going to let you. And same with Councilman Welter. We're not going to let you go too far. We already have plans for you as a grandpa mentor. So plans.
I've heard of it.
Yeah, we're going to execute that. So as soon as we get to New Year, we will do that. Okay, so next up, we are going to be thanking our volunteer boards and committee members who are, we have a number here this evening. Before we go through the boards that are represented tonight, and these are our official boards, I wanted to take a moment to recognize some of the other volunteers who do great work on behalf of the town, but they're not necessarily appointed by the Town Board, like those on tonight's Zoom are. So these people include the members of the Community Equity Task Course, Austin Parks Habitat Stewards, Green Austin, and of course, as mentioned before, Austin Volunteer Ambulance Corps, and our Austin Volunteer Firefighters. Our community would not be the wonderful and welcoming place it is without our equally wonderful volunteers. And as, I can't remember if we already talked about it, it's at the bottom of each of these certificates of appreciation, a phrase that a predecessor of mine, John Trokus, coined, was that the town is the volunteer-spirited town. And we certainly see that with all of our volunteer boards. So I'm just going to go through and mention all of your names, and thank you for your tremendous service. Some of you, this was your first year, and some of you have taken on new positions. Gareth Hoffam, I'm just looking, newly chaired the planning board this year. And I think, I'm trying to remember, Jesus, I think, stepped into a new position. Also, Jim Bassinas, Carolyn Stevens, and Donna Sharrett. We thank you so much for your service on the planning board. Here's a certificate of appreciation for you. And next, we have our zoning board, Sal Carrera, who chairs it, Manny Nicholas Emanuel Enriquez, David Krieger, who we mentioned earlier, and I'm not sure if he's actually with us, David O'Neill, and Tom Wells, who also stepped into a full, full-blown zoning board position this year. And I believe this was Manny's first year as well. Many of our other friends have been serving for many years, and we thank you for serving on the zoning board. Our Board of Assessment Review, we were chatting a little bit with Abby Bergman earlier. He, he joined the BAR, and Val Cassion, I think this might have been your second year, Teresa Duque, Paul Mizilli, and Larry Shactel have our, our institutional knowledge, our experts. We've had you on our board for a while, and we are so grateful for all the hard work that you do with our assessors, with the assessments, and trying to make sure that we all have their assessments townwide. Our environmental advisory committee, Mitzi Elks, continues to chair, and we're grateful to you. John Lad, David Markley's joined this year. And John, I know you retired recently from DEC, but you still continue to help us with GIS mapping. Jim Nolan, Erin Norris, Marilyn Owens, I think, joined not too long ago. And then we have student members Ella Castro, Lon, and Ben Mahud, and Donna Sharrett and David Krieger are our planning board and zoning board liaisons to the Environmental Advisory Committee. Thank you so much for working so hard to make sure that we protect our environment, and that we are very careful as we continue to develop, to do so carefully and thoughtfully.
And before we move on, I just want to note there also our tree board, and we just submitted our application to be a Tree City for the 22nd, 21st or 22nd year. So cheers to the AC for that as well.
Thank you. Our Mid Hudson Ambulance District Board, Richard Wishney is the Town of Austin Citizen Representative to that board, and he himself was instrumental in establishing Mid Hudson Ambulance District. We're so grateful for all his dedication and hard work, even as he's taken on the Acting Commissioner of Emergency Services for the county this past year. Our Board of Ethics, we have Mr. Rich Salz newly appointed to the Board of Ethics, Daniel Collado, and Michael Turco have both been on the Board of Ethics for a number of years now, and we're very appreciative for all of their service. And our Recreation Advisory Board, we had some new appointees this year with Pam Nelson and Brooks Cowan stepping up, as well as Brian Bedansky, and Tamara Underwood has been on for a couple of years now, maybe a few years. We are so grateful. This board meets once a month and is really always making many, many good recommendations and working together with the Village of Austin members, as well as our Recreation Superintendent Bill Garrison. So we're grateful for your service and your advice and direction. And we had our Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee this year, worked very hard with a number of our consultants, PACE, as well as WXY. And we had many public input sessions, and they were a very hard-working steering committee, and we're grateful to Caroline Curvin, Jason Menture, Dave Schofield, Matt Weiss, Gail Marchika, Rob Lowenthal, Marissa Caruso, Donna Sharrett, and Gareth Hoffam. You guys were fantastic. And your, your job's not quite over yet, but we are definitely getting closer to the end of all the, all the hard work. And that is it. All of our boards, you guys are really, really phenomenal, and you are what makes the town work. We're grateful for your continued volunteer service, and we just wanted to let you know, and we want to recognize you in public, because you do a lot of behind-the-scenes work. Some of you are in front of the camera, but not all of you. And so we very much appreciate everything that you do to keep the town running thoughtfully and sustainably, economically, environmentally, and equitably. So thank you for that. Do any of my board colleagues want to say anything additionally?
Just thank you, all of you, for giving your time and your commitment to the community. We all know that it's, you know, sometimes a thankless job, but working together, we really make Austin what it is, and it's deeply appreciated. I know each and every one of you put a lot of work into it and a lot of thought into whichever board you're on, and sometimes on several boards. And just know that you're definitely appreciated, and, and we are thankful. And the whole community is thankful.
And I just would like to say, even going out, I'm appreciative, I appreciate all of the input that we got from different bodies. It helped us to make decisions which were sometimes kind of rough to make. And I'm pretty sure that you keep on, you keep on helping the board. Thank you.
I'm going to just ask if either our council to the town or our planner wanted to say anything. I know you guys both work with a couple of these boards an awful lot. So either Kristy or Valerie, did you guys want to say anything?
I'll just say that I think, you know, all the volunteer boards put a lot of time and effort, and they really do have a passion for the town. And I think it's, you know, it's something very special to experience. And, you know, I appreciate from the professional side of working with boards that really want to learn the material, really want to get engaged, and really want to do what's best for the community.
Wonderful.
I guess I'll just say to Jackie and Northern, just to, I can't say any better than what everyone else has already said about you guys, but it has been an absolute privilege and an honor to work with you both over the years. And I really do hope to continue to see you around. And then just to reiterate Valerie's point, you know, these planning, these board members on the various land use boards and BAR and all the boards, I think it's really important and significant to remember that they are volunteers and that they do this on their own time. And, you know, it's not just showing up at the meetings, it's everything that happens in between the meetings, reviewing materials, you know, reviewing grievances, reviewing lengthy planning board submissions. So it's certainly not an easy task, but it's one that's necessary in order for the town to continue to function. And so without them, it would really be a very challenging environment. And so we're fortunate. And so without them, it would really be a very challenging environment, and so we're fortunate.
Yes, thank you, Christie. And yes, good luck to both Northern and Jackie. And it was really quite a pleasure to be working with you and to have your expertise lent to many of the projects that I worked on, including the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Thanks for chiming in. And I think, good, unless anybody's dying to say anything from our, any of our boards. Otherwise, we might be here all night, but you guys can just give a thumbs up, or can you give a thumbs up? I don't even know if you can. I think you can do reactions. If you're desperate to speak, let me know, but otherwise, we'll go with the thumbs up. You guys good? Thank you again. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So I know it seems a little crazy, but for our meeting, can I have a motion to adjourn? I have a couple of final, final announcements after we adjourn. Could I have a motion? And I'm going to ask Councilman Welchur for the motion, and I'm going to ask Councilwoman Shaw to a second.
Go move to the joint.
Second.
All right. So thank you all so much for joining us for our last meeting of 2021. Please remember, we canceled our 12/28 regular meeting next week. So we will see you in the new year with a work session on Tuesday, January fourth. And our new town board, our reorganization meeting will take place the following Tuesday. We will be hosting our annual inauguration of newly and re-elected town and village officials on Saturday, January first, at 12:00 noon via Zoom streaming to Facebook Live. So you're not going to get to be in the boxes, but we're going to have some of our friends and guests in the boxes, and then we're going to stream it live to Facebook. You can look for the stream on our town and village Facebook pages, which if you don't have access to Facebook, you can get through the links on our websites. We welcome everyone to join us as we start what we hope will be a better year. Of course, we hope that every year, but you know, it's, the last couple have been real challenging. So we really hope that even through all of this, we have accomplished so much together. So please stay tuned to our social media pages for a little bit of a review. Town and village offices will be closing to the public at 12:00 noon this Thursday, December 23rd. Village of Austin is actually closed and will be closed all day on Friday, December 24th. We will also be closing to the public, the town, at 12:00 noon on Thursday, December 30th, and will be closed all day on Friday, December 31st. We wish you all a very Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and a peaceful, healthy, and happy New Year. We will see you all in 2022. Hopefully, we'll be back in person. Have a great year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Merry Christmas, Happy Happy.
Happy New Year, everyone.